As far as my department goes, that's where we stand.
This is Steve Austin, public affairs, that inquiry for the public information on all services. So that eliminates requests and is directly to the public and good for me themselves. Belinda has done an excellent job. She works a lot. She has really extremely brought a chaotic mess of paperwork and trail of abuse and neglect of that office. I would say at least ten years, about fifteen of it. And she has barged back up and got back to the line. We're all within the rules and regulations. And we were just tickled that you decided to come help us through this. So when I first asked her, she was like, "No, I don't want to get involved." And then she saw the struggle over again and she stepped forward and came in and has really just showed us that how lame that island can be anyway. I believe in that.
I think she was always loved to ask for this town's duties.
That is it.
Office administration is a real skill.
What do you say to Belinda?
From town. We live from town. We all here live here.
I work here.
You work here? You work here?
Yeah, we all work here.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you so much, Belinda. I just wanted to show you, point that out. You are very much appreciated. Public safety, or have you got anything else to talk about?
No.
Are you together?
Maintenance, Richard, have you got anything we've got to hand you to be dealt with?
No.
The water has come along, both from water facility people and been on vacation. Waiting to come back next week. So by the end of the month, you might be able to have the water systems online in there a month. And there'll be a tile test run. You'll have to turn it on, shut it back off, and have the approval by DVP and the water management people to go back to put it online permanently. And you have to run some tests and that kinds of stuff. We immediately follow that. Two or three days before the testing, you go online. So I'm really excited. We may have this online by the rest of the month.
How long is it going to take to flush out every volume of volume?
There is, I think it's three days for the water just in the process. No, 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 I'm sorry. In the tank. There's three days for the water in the tank. And there's about a day for the water in the water main itself. So if we get it online and don't let it supply for at least two days, that will bring that reservoir way down. But the risk factor is now we just blew away our comfort zone. Something clicks out or falters a little bit. So we just lost two day cushion for repair. So I'm thinking instead of trying to rush to flush out, let it take its time and keep our buffers on. Right now, we have three days minimum.
When you end it, wait for more running.
Yeah.
And once it's online, you can always open a couple of fire plugs and let some water out.
Well, that's a monthly thing. We flush every month or every few months. So it's almost, which we're online, everything's up and going and fully functioning. We have, we got confidence and we got it. So we still have the old system in place. But we can go right back to, all the switches have been done, managing to switch from the system now to the new system. And then we'll have, we'll change the valves and we go right back to the old system. If something does go wrong, we're going to keep that cushion for at least six months to the year before we look at trying to take out any of the old, just to make sure.
Keep the secondary in place.
There's something there. But everything we have is in duplicates. So there is multi-fault faults in the system now. And I didn't think about it. I should have got some pictures. Around August, a bunch of pictures. So next month, we have to make sure everybody what the plant looks like inside, what it used to look like, what it looks like now, and why it's operated. Okay, you might got anything else?
I had a question for Richard, because he mentioned the access from the, for the festival, that there's a path. Does that need to be cleared or maintained or anything? Can we help, can I help you out with that or anything, if any of that needs to be done? Because I know it's probably not in your regular, you know?
The, well, the park right behind us, there's an access gate.
An access gate? Is there a path that needs to be cleared or anything? Or is it, no, the gates totally just swing over here? That's all I wanted to know. If there was any debris or anything there that needed to be cleaned up to use that access, that's fine.
All right, so we got, if that's stuck, we got announcements.
On the children's table, I have a list of the days that they'll be here in July and August. It's also on the website, on the calendar. The Waukesha meeting for the wastewater is scheduled for July has been canceled and it's been rescheduled. So their next one is August 21st. Remember, everybody, anybody is welcome to come and sit at this, listen to them, see what's going on. So it's usually a one o'clock scheduled date. I also put the new schedule up as well, not only in the agenda, but the schedule itself. And that will be one of those things that we're going to place on the bulletin board, so that, you know, but it is open to the public.
It's the third one of the month that we have off.
Where is it going to be in August?
In August, it's going to be at Bronson. And the address is 660 East Hathaway Avenue.
My question is for Laura. Has anything been done yet about the dogs, wedding families as far as the festival?
I'm watching that. When it comes to the animals, the only way county will even step in is if it becomes aggressive towards somebody. Or we can be, we can send letters out to the owners, ask them to put them up.
At least just for the day?
For the day, okay.
Okay, so.
Relation to my dogs in charge, the dogs that are outside?
I don't, I don't.
I'm Heather. Heather, I live on that first street right there that I've been on for the past two years that I've been cleaning up. I'm pretty sure I'm the only one with the two dogs that do barter street.
I'm more concerned about my dog.
Oh, okay.
There's quite a few dogs that walk.
My dogs have been beat. My dog has been shot. I got the bullet right here. Right in that, somebody stood over top of him and shot him. So, and that's when he was six months old. And they were, actually, my dogs just came back from playing in the water in my backyard. And I had to pull my dog out from my house that was, you know, he was shot.
Is he alive?
Yeah, he's alive. He's alive. But my dogs weren't like that until number one, he was shot. And the female was beaten so bad that her head was so big and her eyes were so closed. So, and there are about three, four people that walk by that my dogs do bark at. But they know the ones that are messed up and the ones that are not.
The ones that, the people that they really don't care about, the people really shouldn't be around the street.
Is it recent?
No, it's been about, it's been a couple of months now. Yes, there has been some new, ever since the new, the new RV parks went up, I have video of the new people that's been coming in. And that have been out all hours of the night on the street. So, I mean, there's other concerns. I've got some concerns. I'm new. I've never been to one of these before, but. Yeah, okay. Well, we let out of our dogs because they just.
They'll come with participation force, we'll get back to that thing. Before we go from leading to public participation, I'd like to talk to the council about having a workshop once a month to bring out ordinances and our resolutions up to date. We have, we have lots of people inquiring about permits and stuff. We're trying to get online with the state bill for them to come on with us. We have to get our ordinances bought up to date and get them lined up so we can have actual set rules to go by. There's been so many, there's been so many precedents that's preset that it kind of eliminates some of the, probably half of the stuff that's out. So we need to at least bring it up to date. So we got where those things are. At least that way the rules are consistent for everyone, the same. And so I think in the first Tuesday of the month would be the same time. Would be, that way we're having all the same cycle of little Tuesdays, Tuesdays, Tuesdays. Okay, at seven o'clock Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month?
I can't promise I will be here just because a lot of my certain things are Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Well, we won't, we won't pass any things means. We'll just be ironing out, making sure with all our eyes, getting it together. And we'll read it at the regular meeting, correct?
There's just two weeks to it.
Right, the five, 10 years, you know, down so we can actually read the ordinances. Now, we've got a lot to do in this behalf, just to get this one out. There's so many things. It's so out of date in the ordinances that was, you know, I think you've told me multiple many times that the ordinances town has really wasn't written for this town. They were taken and pulled from towns like Orlando and Tallahassee that had these things established. And they just pulled those pieces together and made this ordinance for our town. So it really wasn't suited to our town. So it's been, there's so many changes that have been modified over the years, precedents that's been given to make it for what the town needs. And so we just need to bring them up to where they show that, so they are consistent and there are something to stand behind. We got to do it for code enforcement for building and for, you know, code enforcement for the town as well. But we'll start with the building front, because that's the most pressing thing we've got to get in line for, is to get inspectors and, or a build official to stand behind us and our stuff. So first Tuesday every month, 7:00 AM, and then of course, the revenue will be two weeks following.
So starting in August?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that being a workshop, will it be just us or will it be allowed?
Oh, it's allowed, but we're not allowed to participate. This will be us in our conversations. We sort of get it out. Now, we can, I guess we could put up questions to the public. It wouldn't be, it won't be open.
Discussion.
Open discussion to tell us what it is. It's going to be, the discussion will be changed in what we're trying to accomplish. All right, so that being said, we got that reset of that. And so we got to give out a notice. It's two weeks notice for an angle. I'm sure we'll send it out on the board. You know, a week ahead of time, the public notice. Public participation, we've got a few things up. We have a guest here with us. And she is, she submitted a request to the public, she is a guest of ours. She's come to our town. She has helped us out in many times for our needs. We felt, didn't have a clerk or didn't have situations in hand. She certainly has been a help to the town. Mandy Waters, would you like to speak to us?
So yes, my name is Mandy Waters. I'm here tonight as a candidate for the Levy County Court of Court. I first want to say that the last meeting I was at here was like not today compared to today. And I want to commend all of you for getting this together and for what you're doing in all the old programs. And I just wanted to commend you for that. Y'all come a long way. Quite the ruckus last when I was at Quinnsom area, but good to be here. So I've prepared a speech for y'all to keep the timer. I want to skim through this and stay on track instead of venture it off down the rabbit hole. So again, my name is Mandy Waters. I'm a candidate for Levy County Court of Circuit Court in Concord. I have worked at the courthouse for over 12 years. Eight of those years, I worked in the clerk of courts office. And then I went on to work for the county judge, and that's where I'm at now. A little bit about me. I graduated from high school 18 years ago. I love to hunt and fish and enjoy the outdoors. It don't look like it right now, but I do. When I get home, I have my crops on. I am not only aware of the unique culture of the county. I'm a huge part of it. I'm very big in my community. I go to all the events. Love supporting things. I love to see success. And just so many organizations out there that need donations and help, just the helping hand and encouragement. My husband is Timmy Waters. He works for Central Florida Electric in Cheeplin. He's a lineman. He's been there for 16 years. We live in Cheeplin. That's where our homestead is. Him and I have been together for about 14 years now. We've been members of our church for about 10 years, and I love it there. I've held many, many, many leadership roles there. I tend to start one thing and end up with many, many hats, and that's okay. I love it. So I plan on dedicating the rest of my career to the Levy County Courthouse and the citizens of Levy County. I have a service heart. I always have, and it's trickled on up to politics, I guess. So a lot of people don't know what the Court of Court does. So they are the clerk to the circuit court, clerk to the county court, and clerk to the board, county commissioners. A little bit about my career. My career started over 20 years ago in banking. And I hold over 23 court certificate completions from my banking career that I'm very proud of. I did not realize how many I had until I started studying and preparing for this campaign. And I was very proud of myself for that. I also hold many judicial certificates from attending cert conferences and judicial conferences at the courthouse. I worked for the Levy County Journal and Tri-County Advertiser for a short time. I was there advertising the county executive. That was a very big title for a 19-year-old, but I loved it. It gave me a lot of experience. After that, just before working at the courthouse, I worked at Gainesville Healthcare Center. It's the largest, at the time, it was the largest nursing home that we had in Gainesville. And I was the admissions coordinator there, which is a department head. There was 12 department heads over, we've all managed over 100 employees. So that's, I had a lot of management there. I was the acting business office manager. I did human resource work. Again, I wore many hats there as well. I also was acting activities director. And then after that, I went on to work for the clerk of courts office. There, I held many, many titles again. Going into the clerk's office, my dedication and ability and work ethic was quickly noticed. So Mr. Schiff had asked me if I was interested in running one day, and I said, "Yes, actually, I am." My heart's in it. I'm passionate about it, and I absolutely love that job. I love every bit of it. So I started moving around the office to learn everything because I thought that it was important to know what the frontline workers are doing before I take the job over. So there, I was a felony clerk, county ordinance clerk, taxi clerk, value adjustment board clerk. And I also learned recording, public records clerk, civil clerk. I worked in the finance office at times. And I also learned the archive records, retention records, the evidence locker, which is quite interesting. A lot of people don't know that the clerk of court holds the evidence.
He used to be a clerk.
Puts in, the judge puts in the evidence, so clerk has to hold that, depending on what case it is. I also created several manuals at the clerk's office for the different positions that I held for the next person and took that job over. So after that, I was offered a job by our county judge. It was Judge Drowning at the time. His judicial assistant retired, so I prayed about it. I thought about it. I talked to Mr. Schiff about it. And we decided that what I would do was probably the best decision I could make. And in my current role, I manage 10 different court divisions. I read and interpret Florida statute all day, every day. I am a professional liaison between all elected official offices, their employees, attorney offices, probation, you name it. I communicate with a lot of people in this county. Let's go to court hearings, monitor court, draft and file orders, which is a legal document. So I've gained many, many resources throughout my 12 years. And it has been imperative to have a good working relationship with all the elected official offices and have resources to provide to the citizens. I'm a big advocate of that. I want people to leave my office feeling helped, not discouraged. And I want to provide resources to them. I don't want to say, "I'm sorry, I can't give you a legal advisor. I'm sorry, I can't help you." I want to guide them and help them if I can. However, you cannot give anybody legal advice or fill out a document for them. So in closing, I would like to leave you with this. For the past 12 years, I have served the citizens and officials of Levy County with diligence, honesty, and compassion. I've worked the front lines and greeted everyone at the county with a smile and anxious to help them, and still do. I've dreamed of holding this position for a very, very long time. I'm very passionate about it, if you can't tell. I've sat many days in the courtrooms. I understand what the judges need to process your cases, shall you ever have, should you ever have one. I've been watching and learning throughout the years, all the do's and the don'ts. I've learned a lot. I'm very observant. To me, this is not just a professional goal to achieve. This is something that I've wanted to do for a long time. It's not about the job title either. I truly want the job. I want to go in and do the work. And if my employees are out, I want to be able to sit down and do what they can do. I've always kept the public informed, and I love to educate everybody. I think that's very important, to be transparent. I will use my attention to detail, organizational skills, vision, and experience to empower the Levy County Clerk of Courts Office of Belinda. I'm young enough to give decades of dedication to Levy County, but mature enough to administer the duties of the job. I'm excited to enter this next chapter, and I hope to be, I would be honored to be your next clerk of this county. I'm very passionate. Again, I have a desire to serve you, the citizen. I'm here for you. This is an interview. You have to make the decision on who you think is the most experienced and qualified. I'm the only candidate in this race that has any hands-on experience at that courthouse, period. Clerk's office, anywhere in the courthouse. Nothing against my opponents. I think they're great people, but they have no experience. All the other elected officials, most, yeah, all of the other elected officials have had experience in that office before they took it over. There's a reason for that. I'll close by saying I kindly ask for your vote on August 20th. And if you have any questions, please give me a call anytime, or I'll sit around and just answer any questions that you have. Thank you for letting me go past two minutes.
We have, our voting precinct now is at here at the church, the Baptist church, August 20th. And it'll also be here in the, there'll be two more rounds.
Little educational purpose. I'm a big advocate for education. So if you are not a Republican, I will not be on your ballot. You have until July 22nd to change your party to a Republican, to a Republican if you want a vote in this race. If you, if you're an independent or a Democrat, I will not be on your ballot. Should I win in August, you will see me on the ballot in November because there's an independent in the race, and that will push us to November. And that's why we're going to Republican in August. Only Republicans can vote in August, for my race only. And you can change it on Tammy Johnson's supervisor of elections website.
I think it's votelevy.gov.
Votelevy.gov.
Yes.
Votelevy.gov. You can change it there. Again, the deadline is quickly approaching. So that is your decision if you want to voice your prayers.
Thank you.
Any questions? I'll sit around.
All right, for the regular public comment, the way this works, we're going to have timers up here, three minutes. So much time you have to speak, try and direct to us amongst each other if you will. The first one is, it looks like it says tie. I'm sorry if I'm saying that differently.
Thanks, that's one item of business here just because Travis enlisted me. I, time and honor you of my own free will donate my time and efforts to the town of Water Creek before, during, and after the October festival as needed. I do so with no expectation of compensation or favor of any kind. I further release the town of Water Creek from any unreasonable liability or responsibility for injury or damage to my person or property. I guess I can give that to you.
Sure.
For cleanup and stuff like that, just um. In case there is a document that gets drafted up, that's interim, then I'm happy to sign anyone that you.
This is going to be a volunteer basis. Thank you so much.
Anything else, sir, or good?
No, that's it.
Next one is going to be Heather.
I'm Heather. I just wanted to know what was the event for, like what are the, where's the money going to go to? Like, is it going toward the town? Is it, what's it, you know, and what is it going for? Because the people that live here, you know, I mean, I haven't been coming to the town meetings. I didn't know about any of this until today. I'd like to know where the money's going to be going to, or what we are trying to change in this town. What are we trying to fix? What are we trying to make better? That's it. That's the only, that's really what I'm looking for.
Give you a little bit of information on what we're working on. We have had, our insurance has gone up almost $14,000 over last year. And so our budget has increased about 20 grand this year versus last year, this coming year. And we are trying to find sources for the town to have income outside of just taxes. We don't want to raise everyone's taxes $20,000 just to cover the cost of town, basic minimal. If you look around this town, it is basic minimal. This town has no.
Yes, everybody that lives here is pretty much on a fixed income. I mean, there might be maybe 10, 15 people who are on a younger age that are not on a fixed income. But everybody that's lived here has lived here for so many years. They've inherited things. They've been here, they're colored in, so.
The, all the funds, all the rest, that's why the town is actually going to coordinate this one. I mentioned that earlier. The town's doing the coordination, doing all the footwork. Other towns turn it over to different clubs or members of the town, and they make the money off of it. But the town needs this income. So the town is doing our stuff to benefit the budget. Like we said earlier, we've got to cover all of our cost factors. But we're hoping that the town walks away with this with a pretty chunk of change out of this to help us with our new budget. And also, and it also will be the public involvement. Things this town, for people in this town to do to get together, other than coming here and having to be exposed to our seminar, arguing, carrying on.
So, well, I understand that. But so like where's, like what is the money for? Who is it for here in this town? Like where is it for taxes? So as people that live here, we don't pay those taxes for our town that we live in?
That's not what I answered the question. I'll answer it again, okay?
So I didn't.
I'll answer it again. The funds is to cover our budget, our upcoming budget, is where this money's going to go. It is going to run with the general fund. It'll have, our taxes, our budget has increased right at $20,000 over the last year's budget. And we're trying to recruit this money somewhere else other than just taxes. The taxes, you'll have to pay your taxes. You'll always have to pay your taxes. And taxes always go up. You can't change that.
And taxes actually go to the county. You know, the town gets maybe 2% to 3% of what. And are these taxes going up because of our, because of the new, because of the RV parks or what? That's, I mean, is that why the taxes are going up? Just yearly, they go up?
Your gas costs more. Your light bill costs more. Everything your family does costs more than it used to cost. Just like your household, you run it every year. It costs you more to run it this year than it lasts you. It's the same for the town. And we are required to have certain things by the ordinance that we have that's not been met. And because the town doesn't have the funds to do it. So we have to, that's another reason we're trying to bring the ordinances up to date to what the town really is and what the town really needs. So if it's, so the town is in compliance with all the state laws and regulations, other than just on paper, yeah, we're going to do this. But over here, we don't have the money for this. We can't do this. So we've got to bring these two together so that we can have something. And this is a public community involvement project. And this is a public community involvement project. And I'm hoping that we do more of these. We've got the community center coming up. I hope we start doing a monthly event at the community center for the town. And this is stuff that, you know, would be, you know, give involvement to the people of town. And that's what the purpose of this is. Give the involvement and help with the budget.
So what else want to be at? Just food vendors?
Street vendors, just like one, two, three, going...
The question is, what is it for kids to do?
Kids. Well, there'll be some things for the...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, there'll be some kids have kids stuff to do, kids.
It's family morning, I mean, I'm very, very morning. If I want to go to something, I'm bringing my kids to it, hoping they have fun too.
Well, this is a family event, this is...
Yeah, because the more input you guys add, the more we, we're all new to this. So, you know, if you, if I mention that, I'll make a note and we'll start investigating what, what can we do for the kids?
One of the things I would like for the town to do, the city of Archer has just the last couple of years, has put in a little splash pad over there. It's very, it was very inexpensive, it was low profile, it was, I mean, it costs money. But it wasn't nothing to laugh at, but it was just really neat, just things for the kids to do. You know, there's something to put in in the park or at your highest. And if we can raise the money somehow to pay this thing, there's something you can take the kids to. I guarantee you, as far as this is going, them kids will want to go there every day right now.
You give me a good press, I'm talking. Well, I'm the concrete man, I can do what you want.
Okay, this is, this is what, these are goals we're trying to reach here.
That's what the money is going for, is trying to keep the funds up, so that other things can be done, other than just the budget.
It's going to take a while to bring Otter Creek back, because I'm from, my grandpa was here for all his life. I'm from Cheeplin, but I've been in this area all my life. The Strong's, I've known them since I was a kid. I know what was here. This used to be called the Cudger Slide. That's history. That is this history. It shouldn't be coming back with the Cudger Slide, I think, because, you know, that's what it was.
Alright, three minutes is up on this one.
It sounds like that is politically incorrect. That would be politically incorrect, unfortunately.
That's what everybody else thinks, but we call it the Cudger Slide.
I know.
Public comments, okay. Does anyone, before we adjourn the meeting, is anyone in the council, I didn't think to say, do you want anything else?
The only thing I'd like to say is, people live around here, your neighbors and all, they didn't come to it, then, you know, tell your neighbors to start coming, participating, you know, the best way we can do for our town is find out what people want, what people need, is for them to come and talk to us.
Right. We need, we need the people in this town to talk to us, not just three or four that just want what they want and not what the rest of people want. When I go, when I go around and talk to other people, I get a lot of input, and I hear a lot of things. And it's not things that have been represented at this table in the past.
I'm your neighbor, and I spoke with you, and my dog came from your house, got shot. I mean, that's kind of, I mean, it really...
Two dogs in my house every day, and they still are.
Yeah, playing in the field, you know, they were not hurting anybody, not to be shocked. I mean, normally... But we're saying, hey, they're more like...
Public comments, okay. Lex, welcome. And Mrs. Jones?
Pretty lonely. You said you had the bullet?
I got the video of the deer, so I'm glad to go back to him.
Did that man come on my property?
When I got there, he wasn't on my property.
So I took you and turned it off for the money that I had.
Well, it's kind of convenient, you know, they take the money and give it to the owner.